All right. Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone to our Acheson County Commission meeting for Tuesday, Monday, July 3rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you could please stand and join me in the invocation presented by Father Mike.
Loving Godly, thank you for your presence among us on this Independence Day celebration time. We thank you that we live in this county, the site of the first Fourth of July west of St. Louis by Lewis and Park. May that freedom that you have given us continue to ring and rain in our hearts. So that we might truly glorify you in working for the common good. As we hear in Psalm one forty-nine, praise the Lord, sing to the Lord a new song. His praise in the assembly of the faithful. We ask that that praise might redound in this meeting. That your blessings be upon the commissioners, upon our county and all of our citizens. We ask all these prayers in your powerful name. Amen.
You could remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. It'll be very good.
Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Not seeing any approval of minutes. Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from last commission meeting? Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rebus?
Um, nothing for me.
Okay, Commissioner Noel?
I have a area agency on AG meeting in Hiawatha this Thursday. Uh, that's, that's about it.
Okay, um, I have a senior village advisory board meeting on Wednesday, so. All right, new business before the board. Um, I have two purchase orders. Uh, the first is a purchase order. It's for Acheson Senior Village presented by our senior village administrator. Coming out of the senior village capital reserve fund. Um, this will be paid to Sowers Heating and Cooling. Um, for a York seven point five ton AC rooftop unit. And multi-zone mini-split five-wall indoor heads, um, in the total amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Do I have a motion to approve the air conditioners?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right, and. Have one other one also coming out of the senior village capital reserve fund, um, presented by the senior village administrator. To Craig Ostertag. Um, this is for a hundred gallon natural gas. Water heater in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, that for you? Morning Travis. Welcome. Forever you feel comfortable sitting. Um, you're up. Perfect timing. We're running ahead, so we have the information that you, um, sent over, um, for us. And this is Travis Grossman, Memorial Hall trustees, for the twenty twenty-four appropriation request.
Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
Just wanted to run to catch you up on a few things, run through, uh, requests and, uh, and see what your thoughts were on bands. Um, first off, I, I think this would been, I was here a year ago maybe and, and talked about. What it is we could grovel from the counties in terms of, uh, money that we could use to support that building. I know that we've given, and I think we've been given thirty thousand dollars for goodness, for as long as I can remember, in terms of looking at the books. So one of my questions was, at the very least, could we at least go back to that direction? But, um, as the expenses have climbed, could, is, is there any room in the budget where we could grab some more potentially? So that's one of my requests. And then also I wanted to follow up on, I, I understand the ARPA money has been. Allocated already, but I wanted to see where your mindsets were, thoughts were on a few of the projects that we have outstanding there at the building still. And kind of get your take on that too. So, uh, what questions might you have for me or, or what could I answer for you? Or do you want me to just jump in with my others, my other thoughts on the building?
Commissioner Rebus, do you have any questions?
No, I've just jumped in.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Not, not yet. I want to feel free to jump in, but I think as you talk, it will remind me of.
Sure, sure. So you may recall the, uh, um. WDM architects had provided us with a really comprehensive plan on what the building could use for and needed also. Um, and so there's several, when I, when I made several efforts to go out and round up money for these projects. One was through the city of Acheson through their ARPA funding request. And we were able to secure twenty-five thousand dollars in support of the railing project. Um, I did also write for the traction development grant program, state grant. They called it the ADGP program and it was a five hundred thousand dollar request that in hindsight. We, there was a lot, I think they had two hundred and forty-seven applicants for the thirty million dollars. And I knew of two individual five million dollar projects prior to that going in. I'm sure there were more of those statewide, so. Um, that, that pool is, was, um, significant, significantly smaller, I imagine, when it came to. Looking at five hundred thousand dollar grants for communities like us. So. My point to that, we did, we did not, we were not successful in that request. Um, and then I did look into and began, uh, but did not complete the individual development account tax credit program that state had. The challenge with that was that we were on such a tight, tight, a tight timeline. They needed it submitted before I could get here before the commission. When the way those tax credits work on either, either the historic tax credit level or the, the state, the way this was functioned. We would have had to front, we being the county, had to front all of the money spent on any of the projects we were going to do. And then in return would have been given tax credits at X amount of dollars. So we hadn't had a conversation as to whether or not you guys would even support writing the check to begin with. And I thought, it's just the timeline didn't work. So I, I didn't get that down. Um, all that said, going back around, looking at the, uh, W, or yeah, the WDM architects' analysis. Three of the things jump out at me that, that kind of rise to the top that need to still be considered. The tuck pointing on the building, on that west side of the building. That's been an issue and, and a need for a long time and deferred maintenance that, uh, we're still deferring, obviously. Um, then the railing, and I brought this up to you before, the railing, the hand railings up in the balconies. Uh, that, that they pointed out, that's a, that's a safety hazard. And we, we agree as, as trustees, we agree when we think we need to get it done. The city is willing to give us twenty-five thousand dollars towards that project. I don't know if it'll be that much, but, but these repairs and remodels that we need to do. Um, but they're looking for some, some contributions from the county side for that. Uh, so there's that component. And then additionally, lighting. So it's one of the things, the lighting, and by that I mean this, the auditorium lighting itself. Currently running on the mercury, mercury vapor bulbs and they're not terribly efficient. And they're hard to change. And when they go out once a year or so, we have to replace one. It's, it's dangerous and difficult. The hope or thought would be to come in there with some LED light, uh, to make that facility brighter, one, two, and, and also more energy efficient. So those are kind of the three push points that I wanted to ask about and get your thoughts on it and see where you guys. Might be with funding, you'd have available money, just piles of it, I'm sure in closets anywhere that, that could be accessed or utilized.
I wish that was.
Yeah, right, don't we all?
Um, do you have, uh, estimated costs on those three projects?
Outside of, no, um, not off the top of my head. What I do have or what the, uh, what was suggested, twenty-five thousands, what's, was suggested from WDM. For the tuck pointing, I, I think we know for a fact that was going to be a little more than that because we had it bid. Probably five years ago and Brian, were he here, could probably talk to that. Uh, he was a part of that process. The railings, they suggest nine thousand dollars, but honestly, I, I don't think that that would even cover the fabrication. Because we do know we need, I think, ninety-five of those individual hand railings fabricated, uh, and then installed. But, um, so that's kind of where that, that is. And the lighting, they suggest though. In their workup, they put it in a new ceiling. So their estimation was two hundred thousand, but that's not, that was not really the direction we wanted to go. Um, leaving the existing ceiling, we were just concerned. With, with possibly getting new lighting, lighting instruments, whatever you call them, in place of the mercury vapor. So I don't have an actual, but we could, I could come up with those things. That's just kind of where ballpark where we're at. But if we, I don't know, we could probably come up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, put twenty-five from the city in on that. Um, that's just a ballpark. Maybe it's less than that. Maybe it's a hundred and twenty-five, the city puts in twenty-five, we come up with a hundred for some of these things. That's, that's kind of, that's, that's the song and dance in my head, I think, for, for in terms of the building. I don't know.
Okay, so I'm just sitting here thinking that we don't have extra tax money with valuations where we're at, like anything beyond what our current, um. Ask has been in the past right now, but I was also like, obviously finding a solution, being willing to be, to partner, to come up with, how do we accomplish it without that?
Right.
Um, I know our financial director has expressed interest, you know, once we get through the budget season, you know, we're identifying needs. Um, to look for grants and different opportunities as well. Um, welders for fabrication, is that something we could partner with Highland?
I reached out to them and asked, and at the time when I asked him, it was the middle of the semester and he said, hey, we like the idea. We're just writing a little of everything we're already doing. And, and so we had that thought too.
Because I was like, okay, well, fabricating and welding and even the electrician part, like if we could partner with our local school that is doing that. Um, we might be able to get it cheaper. And then just beyond that, like. I think that the fundraising, just community fundraising or, um. As, you know, some of these events are taking place, maybe they add a, a five dollar facility fee. Where everybody's contributing to the, to the help of the.
Right.
I mean, I know when I put my kids in things, you know, you pay the fee for the programming and if it's. You can't have programming without a facility.
Right.
So maybe there's a, a way to put a fee on, on the programming where. You know, hey, you gotta pay five dollars extra kid, but it's helping go toward the facility. I don't know. I'm just trying to.
It's a good idea.
I'm just trying to brainstorm on how to generate additional revenue. Um. You know, and if we have some literature or. If you're funneling like contributions through the trustees or something, we could post that in the courthouse like. Hey, Memorial Hall is needing X, Y, and Z. Here's where you can donate. Um, I mean.
Understood.
It's just times are, I mean, things are tough right now and. I, I'm definitely willing to help and come up with a way.
And so the ARPA funds are all out the door that, so when I came and talked to you guys about that a few months ago, there wasn't anything here tagged for this at all, which you're telling me.
Correct.
That's disappointing. Okay. Aye.
You guys have any ideas or thoughts or input for Travis?
Yeah, one thing, Travis, you, um, Saint Benedict's Church. Just did all the tuck pointing and the same crew came back. I mean, they're working on the school right now. And their work has been stellar. They've done a great job. So you want to get a bid, a fresh bid on that tuck point, you got, you're right there in town right now. That, uh.
What's?
Okay.
Um, that's your school?
Yeah.
And they were doing the same thing in the bulletin is fundraising, like here's the need, here's the cost, and then everybody was.
Yeah, I like to see cost estimates on those projects and I don't want to waste contractors' time, but. I mean, we have a number that's, we gotta, we gotta know what the cost is, you know?
Okay. I guess my thought would go probably the most. Important to me would be the tuck point and ceiling because that is to preserve the actual structure. The, the lighting that exists is sufficient. I mean, it's may not be the most efficient, but. If you're going to replace the whole thing, it would take how many years before you would see enough savings to pay itself off? So. I mean, to me, that wouldn't be a good, uh, use of, of tax money.
Uh, just to be clear on that, or I, I'm just looking for the gymnasium lights. I'm looking for a full lighting remodel. I'm just talking about the eight. Lights that we have hanging on the ceiling currently that are mercury vapor, getting those replaced out and putting LEDs in. Yeah, I could see a savings immediately. I mean, immediately hundreds of dollars worth of savings. Those lights will get kicked on in the morning and they don't get shut off till late at night, you know, it could be, it could be significant, you'd be surprised. But yeah, I get your point. Um.
If they're kicked on in the morning, uh, there's. Is there a constant activity where you need those lights on all day?
I know they don't have them all on all the time, but we do have people that walk at six in the morning. Um, so, you know, they need adequate lighting for that. Uh, given liability reasons, you can't just shut the lights off on a building that's open to the public and. You know, you wouldn't do it at the courthouse and it's the same situation. So you do need to have adequate safety lighting.
Yeah, well, I still understood, understood.
The hand railing is that, so here's a question for you. Because the trustees have a concern, if we've got, now that it's out in the public, so to speak, that it's been highlighted, that it needs to be fixed. And we, we've all known, we've had an issue with it for years. Somebody gets hurt there in that situation. I mean, who's liable for that? Trustee's gonna get sued for that? Do I personally get sued for that? How's that gonna fall out? We don't have directors and officers liability for the trustees necessarily. And I just wonder if there, if somebody goes, well, you knew you needed handrails and grandma fell down the stairs and. Now it's not okay. Um, you know, I, I just wonder where that, where that fault lies. So that's a big concern. You know, I think now that it's out about that we, that we pay attention to that. And I think the city, the city sees it swell. I think that they would, they would like their, they put twenty-five thousand dollars towards that effort, so we look at that.
Well, how, how does that building comply with ADA? I mean, how, where's any, um. Body gonna go to, to watch a game that's needs ADA compliant?
There are some areas on the, would it be the north side of the building? They bring the garage doors up and they have people seated just off court side there. So that would be, that would scratch that itch. You could also roll them in behind the Plexiglas. I'm saying rolling, they're on a wheelchair. Or a walker, put them behind the Plexiglas on the east side there. There's chairs there by the stage.
Okay.
So there's adequate, but I mean, even somebody able-bodied up on that balcony, I mean, it's all painted one color. It's hard to pick it up even visually, you know? So.
I knew I brought that up a couple of years ago, because it's definitely concerning. You sit up there and it's concerning.
Sure, steeper than most. Yes, it's got a, it's a larger rise, you're right.
Yeah.
Eight, nine inches, something like that. So.
Well, to, to address the issue about, uh.
Liability.
Liability, yeah. Um, the canvas is part of the, for Kansas, Acheson County is part of the. The, a multi-line pool that provides insurance coverage. It's not actually insurance because it's a self, self-insured group.
Sure. Yep.
But as long as you are working within the scope of your duties as a trustee, you should be covered.
Okay, that's, I'll take that back.
So it's, there was an incident with that liability fall on the rec commission because they're running the programming?
Well.
Cause they're charging and then the visitor.
I don't know that. And I don't, you know, the, the question was, who's going to get sued?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, it.
Don't lock him up, right?
You know, how, how bad the injuries are.
Sure.
There, if the injuries are bad enough, probably everybody does, but.
Aye.
But in any event, it should be covered. He should also be protected by the Kansas tort claims act.
Okay.
So.
Uh, that's good to know.
But commission also, in general, every time we've had somebody come in and talk a little bit about the requirement, the funding. Um, Memorial Hall, this is a, um, a county building and so it is owned by. The, the county, uh, by statute is placed under the control of the Board of Trustees, of pre-trust. Um, there. The statute says that the expensive maintenance of the memorial shall be paid out of the general fund. Of the county or out of the special fund. And it gives you the discretion on how you want to fund it and what amounts that you wish to fund it, so. Uh, that's all going to be, you have an obligation to take care of it because it's your building. You have an obligation. To take care of it by statute, but there's no specific amount, no specific dollar limit. And that's KSA seventy-three dash four zero seven.
You did that one more time, Paul.
Seventy-three dash four zero seven.
For anyone wanting to support these progress, um, do they just send it to your attention?
They could, yes.
Is that Memorial Hall trustees at eight nineteen commercial?
That's the way it should go, yes.
Okay.
And then attention, my name would be awesome too.
Okay.
That way it will get to my notice. What do we have currently, um, if, if in the budgeting process, what are we thinking about, uh, for support currently? Just where we had been in the past? Was it thirty thousand? Does that sound right?
Yeah, that would be my, my recommendation, because that's where, I think we're kind of, I'm headed across the board that way, keeping it safe.
Got you, got you, got you. Well, and that's all I've got. Looks like I've, I've got some little bit of homework for us that I can take care of and send back either email or otherwise. Uh, come back and discuss.
Awesome.
Then, uh, that would give us some answers on tuck point at the very least. And maybe we, we can look at some electrical and see what that would take too. And then, yeah, well, we'll circle back on the lighting, see if we can get somebody interested in it.
Yeah, the lighting, I mean, I think it would make night and day difference in there from those big.
Yeah.
But do those take, like, they have to work up?
Yeah, for their full capacity, yeah. Yeah, it's not like a jet engine when you flip it on, yeah. School up.
Alright. Okay.
Alright.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much.
Bet, thank you. Happy Fourth of July.
Good to do.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Um, so we have some time. Do you want to do this one? During quiet fifteen minutes?
Still, when we have a, uh. Blend of Zoom and non-Zoom, do I use the template of? The non-Zoom or with, calling for an executive session? However.
Aye. I think just do your best. Okay, I think everyone will have a hand. One of the commissioners will be on Zoom.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at ten twenty-two. And for consultation with an attorney, is this attorney client? Yes. Um. With an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion and that the board come out of executive session. And I have my head.
Everyone, I think you can just say in fifteen minutes.
Okay, come out in fifteen minutes, uh, in the commission room, which are the EOC. Uh, one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine. We also have a commissioner on Zoom who is participating. And those present will be, uh, county counselor, finance director, uh, senior village administration. Administrator and the three commissioners.
Been moved all second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. We will head into executive session. And I did look at it again. Park and Lot repairs and repairs. Okay, Alan, we've made a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes three to zero. We will head into executive session. Okay, we are back in regular session. Uh, is Ray coming via Zoom or? Oh, there you're standing. Yep, sure. Thank you.
We can, you can, uh, contact Michelle.
No.
No. Okay, alright, yeah, I put him in the blue folder to scan it. Thank you. Hi, hi, welcome. Good hour, you got it. This is awesome. You brought the crew. I love it. Whoops, that was. Oh, hi guys. Welcome.
I know.
Sorry, I sent a message. I, I, we had baseball the night of your welcome, um, get together. So I meant to come out, but. Fortunately, our games, but congratulations. I'm excited to see you came on board, I think.
Yeah, no.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Uh, he's on Zoom. I'm on, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, it is eleven o'clock. So Ray Lad, Extension Council with the twenty twenty-four appropriation request. You're up.
Oh, thank you for the time and the opportunity to share. And of course, as you can see, uh. Board people are, are alone. Uh, Shannon, Neil is the board chair this year. And then Sheila Chalfant at the end of the table is on the board, and it's vice chair, and Jennifer Maxwell is also on the board.
Oh.
And, um. Taylor Lee being the new facts. I'm not sure where is your camera for.
That's right.
That's her, really is. He sees a profile, uh, but, yeah, okay, we got Taylor, uh, the new employee as of middle of May. So family consumer science area, support to youth development, so. Um, there again, I think as in your letters, uh, said, nothing really. Set format, if you do have questions, you'll certainly try to answer those, so. Um. The board folks, it is their programming that we in extension are trying to do. And so basically we'll allow them to share and speak. And if you do have questions, uh, do let us know, so.
Yeah, so I would just say, you know, we're excited, um, with having Taylor coming on. Um, Ray is, uh, looking at, uh, just for y'all's awareness, uh, retirement date, um, later this year. Um, so we'll be looking to hire a new, um, agriculture agent, um. Probably, uh, looking at a November timeframe. So, uh, we have hired a office professional slash program assistant. Um, Tricia Chalfant, and so we're just excited. Uh, Taylor's working on some programming. Um, and we have some movement, um, and some, some program committees with some, some projects that, that we have going on as well, so.
Anything else that you have to comment on? Anything on this?
I, I'm just very excited about our new staff. I think Taylor's jumped in. And been a really great job as far as he's been out meeting people, doing some networking. Um, you know, it's going to take some time to develop some programs, but I'm, I'm very excited about the, the direction that we're taking with this one.
Has there been any movement on different?
There has not. To date, we've not worked, worked on that. We're working on getting settled.
With the Taylor and the office professional. And we'll continue those talks here, once we get a retirement date from Ray and see what our candidate will look like for an agricultural agent.
It's not out of the question, Eric, and I will just say, I did have a conversation with, just by accident. Um with someone on the Brown County level, and there were three commissioners, two are not in on board without. There has been talks there, so that would um I don't think anybody's opposed to it, but I think just generally speaking. That we're on the uphill battle of where we were, and that that would be kind of the next step. Once we get that full staff and go, and then we can start those conversations, but it's gonna take some. A lot of communication with some of the other counties and where those commissioners are at, as far as funding. Um just generally speaking, I know Brown County is um a two-agent county, but the commissioners won't fund it. They won't, they won't fund the second agent, and that was someone that was on the extension board up there.
Set an option.
To not fund it, well, you guys did it. Yeah, it all the funding.
But then it was returned, but.
That is correct, but I think we can feel like we have um displayed. That improvement has been made, and that I believe that we're on the uphill swing and on a on a better track. But in reference to districting, it's gonna take a lot of communication to get it to that point.
Wouldn't that be better served if there was like ongoing talks, so maybe you would have a district where. When you were sharing uh staff or uh so and so you hire Ray's replacement. But then you negotiate into a a district, and everybody's got somebody.
You don't drop agents just because you district, and then the way Carla explained it to us.
But a lot of times, isn't the savings or the efficiency being that you don't need to duplicate all those?
There wouldn't be new created areas, the agents would be more specialized in individual things. So that they can offer more services throughout the multiple counties.
Why couldn't it be that you would share that without, I mean, you would share that agent or you could reduce staff?
That's not the way that it is in the other counties.
In that way.
By just by just higher Carla's suggested, and and based on what we can see from surrounding counties, they hire more specialized agents, not more generalists.
But why wouldn't somebody, why couldn't somebody look into that? I mean, because somebody else hasn't done it, we haven't even thought of that?
Like Shannon said, we haven't really looked at the districting, we've been just trying to fix what we needed to fix at the local level first. Before we can be marketable for a districting level.
That's kind of how I understood it in years past of like we, you guys had like the goal to get situated. And then have time to prove yourself to become attractive.
Yes.
And then once you've done that on your own, then it's easier for commissioners to sit with other commissioners and say, look what we've done. Like here's our track record of of what we've done, which I've noticed on your social media presence, like the programming and the kids. All the things being offered for four age children and county children in general, so. Um been trying to stay in tune with what you guys are doing, and it seems like guys are, and the um community garden that you put in. Um down at. Mall in mall towers, I was like memorial holes on my head.
And I think understanding, you know, you know, from you guys sitting with the other commissioners and understanding like why aren't. Why, I mean, you know, that would be something that you all should know, like, I mean, maybe we act. Maybe we, maybe it's like a red flag.
That's interesting, that we could start those conversations with the commissioners to say, what do you see us having to do, like, what do we have to do?
The Donovan County and Brown County, that you guys, because you guys do have to be part of that agreement as well.
That's a good idea. Something on our to do.
And see what they're looking at from their perspective, like why, I mean, what what makes this attractive or not attractive, right? And then, I mean, we can start working together, and and we're gonna continue once we get things situated, but to go in with, you know. All everything new and whatnot, just from a timing standpoint, I don't believe that it's the correct timing.
What is the additional funding for over last year?
Ray.
It will be that full full staff. Two full-time agents, and the office. Not have uh binding the wage. Wage salary to attract a person to hire a person uh that continuing is is an increased expense. Uh as far as uh probably other line items, uh not significant increases. The board did pick up liability insurance a year ago, and once they wanted to continue that. Uh with like a vehicle upgrade so that the insurance, additional insurance and or. Operating expenses on that.
You know, I have a vehicle, do you?
We do not have to back, have not for. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, yeah, so the agents drive. What's that?
You said vehicle upgrade, what was?
It didn't enable, I shouldn't say. And then I did visit with uh Wes Lantor a little bit as far as the process and county had been gone, so he might get a suggestion. But probably in essence, period, it would be uh employee retaining and attracting employees as far as for the extension program.
Because to get a new, you know, new agent hired, depending on their level, it's gonna be most likely than a month, eight thousand dollars. Per salary. And if we're gonna attract someone with experience, it'll obviously be more than than that.
But uh just a couple of years ago, when we had two agents, of course, both tenure there, they were making much more than, so with. I mean, actually, two starting positions ought to be low, I mean, with than what we were paying just a couple of years ago.
We have an office professional slash program assistant hired in, and she's hired in right now at twenty dollars per hour. It's not just a. Just a. You know, probably like administrative assistant only type salary, so.
And and we had to up that at our level because there was no applicants at the sixteen and seventeen dollar an hour, there was no applicants. At all, so we kind of, I mean, I think everybody has been in that position, I believe you guys have as well, so it's not new to trying to have to. And this one comes with good skills, yes, and so there there could be some process for their for some major help. For to for programming for the agents.
And in the seemingly in the Kansas State University system, the extension pool. As they advertise for new agents' base salary, uh they Manhattan find out that base salary is not attracting. Quality candidates of other competition, so even though it's advertised. Uh what it is advertised as, they're finding they have to to get quality employees, they have to go above that advertised base. And I would need to inject Allison Martin pain in, and she is also on the extension board there, so appreciate Allison. She works with the family consumer science program development community, so. So just to introduce her, still still on the budget, got questions, yeah. So I, I mean, uh back to your districting question, have you heard any hint from other commissioners about their interest of it? Which probably is if, when you are visiting with commissioners, if there ever is that conversation or even start that conversation. There probably an appreciation from the extension side as far as uh looking at districting.
Now, and I will say on one other note, that is a goal of Carla's for us, that we hear that often from her when she's meeting with us. Our area director, that that is the ultimate end game goal. Is to district this, that that, I mean, that's that's high on the priority with her, once we get things stabilized at our local level. I think she as well knows that we have to get our things in, we have to have our ducks in a row before we can go. Approach any other counties to to make that happen, and I feel like we have made great strides, I've been on board since January. And we've been working very hard to to get things in order and things functioning the way they should. And I just think it's one step at a time, and we're just on that step of before we actually get to this.
Have we got a full grasp and understanding now of the scholarship program that was.
Yes.
Basically in limbo.
Yes.
Before.
Yes, and there there are a few little minor things that are behind the scenes getting worked out, but yes, it is very much under control.
That's.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yes, very much. And even though we've just been on board for in high since January, you guys know that we've been active for the couple of years prior to that. And even if we, our terms are up, and we have made the commitment, even if we don't get back on board or a P D C. With these upcoming elections, like I'm still going, and Sheila's gonna stay active, you know, so we do have that group that are committed. And we're trying to attract more and get the awareness out there of number one, what is P D C, what is extension? And and kind of have, but this takes time.
Yeah, we're gonna work on display at the fair and try to try to get people just more awareness and get, you know. Some competition to try to get some more people, you know, just bring awareness of what it is, and um so that's that's another thing that we have. That we're working on, that's gonna be helped.
Commissioner Eavis, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, I don't think so, I think your council's great, and uh you guys are, I'm glad you guys are kind of bringing it back, getting more things involved. Taylor's gonna be a great addition, so I think a lot of it's real positive moving forward.
Did you have any additional comments or questions, okay? So as you guys know, you're uh as appropriations, you are part of our general budget, um with valuations up. We're all just like hoping not to have a heart attack or stroke through the process, so I can't um, I. Don't believe I can probably get on board for an increase at this moment after we've looked at. You guys are like the final ones coming in, and we we see where our numbers are, um but absolutely am I supportive. And willing to work with you however we need to, I appreciate you saying, reaching out to those commissioners. I have contacts, I I network with them often, so I would love to hear that from them. And I know that that's been you guys' goal, is stabilize and then continue to be to be better each year, and I. Wholeheartedly see that happening, like, it's it's awesome, it's amazing, and I congratulate you guys for everything you've accomplished over the past couple of years. Because it's impressive, and uh you know, having that space and professionalism and all the programming you guys are putting through. I just. I um. That's where I'm at, I mean.
Thanks.
I appreciate, I I wish the year was not so.
But when you say no increases being made, are you saying the same level of last year, or are you guys even considering a cost of living? Small increase even part of it, just to keep up with that.
So we're still crunching our numbers, but I'm kind of looking at that one sixty-eight, five thirty-four of just holding on. And then I I mean, hopefully, things change, and it it's just hard when you have forty-six or. Forty-four line items of, you know, and I mean.
What was our number without the car, I don't have that, like without the twenty-five thousand, what was that number, Shannon?
Twenty-five thousand.
Oh, it's a one seventy-nine, seven sixty-six. That didn't have the cars.
No, that's not the point, okay, sorry.
There was a discussion over it.
Okay, okay, and I know last year during that, speaking of the car, you guys were gonna kind of do mileage for a year. And kind of benchmark your expenses to say, is this worth it, or should we just do mileage and all the things, so um just.
Presently, we are under mileage.
Yeah.
Of course, when it's just little old me and you don't have an office professionally, you're in the office, so it went too much mileage, but now.
Yeah.
Full of staff, so to speak, it herself to be out, and you just find out that extension, we have to be out going to people. Um so, yes, mileage is presently, and there again, it's quite frankly, this to be as a personal agent, it's my vehicle. Do I want to put miles on my personal vehicle, and I choose yes, to get out into service people.
Yeah.
But then, and presently, I don't haul people too much, as that said, we went out to Rock Springs. Last week, just observed, and it's, so it gets to be that liability, do I, as an agent, wanna carry that liability? Or is it better for the extension council or the extension districts to have their vehicle and that liability is with that extension board, so. We will, I mean, we will continue to look at that economics and what that is, but.
And with more programming, I mean, yeah, this year will be the year to to see that, we have a program assistant, Taylor. Ray for now, and then he'll be a new agent, so we'll. We'll get that.
I think any request for a vehicle in the future would have to be also maybe policies and procedures, so for private use of that vehicle. But it's in place.
It's in place.
Good.
I think we took that care of that.
We took care of that a lot, yeah.
Dancing them.
Good. And and still jumping back to districting, and there again, is we've already established, long term. Our initial discussions probably started back with Leavenworth County as a action in Leavenworth County, and there was. Financially some advantages for Addison County as well as just programming, so that didn't come to be, of course, though, so uh. I mean, all counties are on the table as you visit with commissioners.
Okay, I'm glad.
Look at, and even, oh, I mean, it's middle art district well, well established, I think they're very comfortable, and you visit with those commissioners. And they really do not have to do this budgeting process for the middle art extension district of Jackson, Jefferson, Jackson and Nemahaw. But commissioners should have a grasp as far as what they observe as the benefit districting to, if. Uh if there are commissioners that have experience back in the days of extension coming for budgeting. We can talk more about that when you have questions on that part, that's kind of a way.
No, that's um, I appreciate that, because originally I'd written down Donovan and Brown, but keeping the options open to all. Um but also knowing that that is the goal you guys want, because we don't want to be commissioners speaking on behalf of the extension, if that's not the goal. But gathering initial info and um guidance that we can work with you, I think would be a positive.
Goal at the state level is is at the state level, they would like to see this.
Yeah, I want a districting.
I I just got to know that this story, that, you know, our initial discussions and down the road, progress down the road was with Leavenworth County. But that didn't come to these, so logic would be Brown and Donovan County, that.
Uh for the commission, your funding requirement for extension is under KSA two dash six, and it's a unique uh statute. It calls for an interactive process, where they submit a budget, and you either approve it or send it back to them for amendment. If you do send it back for them, to them for amendment, they then either amend it or don't amend it and send it back to you. And then if you're uh your choice to either approve it as submitted or to modify it. Uh ultimately, it's the decision of the Board of County Commissioners, who are obligated to approve some budget, but there's no specific.
Guys have anything else for us while you're here? Well, we appreciate you all coming, and yeah, um make sure you let us know your dates, so we can come and some.
I gotta tell the board first. The assets mindset, and I have to share, I need to, I just been here a long enough this time, somebody else say, I guess, so. Uh so I've spoken in this generality jail this fall. So yeah, but it's more proper to tell your employee, board members. Find out secondly, so don't put it out on there. Just yet.
Awesome, thank you guys. Yeah, thank you.
Nice to meet you. Decisions.
Uh probably within a month.
June. The date we're shooting for. Soon, hopefully, they're wrapping things up, so soon, hopefully July. Um can we do a quick executive session, non-elected?
I've got.
Finance, county commission, and. Finance, county commission and after you know what.
So this is your snack?
Let me read what I need to do. Sorry, I have.
What's that for? On what subject? I mean, okay, well, that's what what I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I thought that they would have to be.
Yeah, for for just a few minutes.
Okay. Fifteen?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners recessive executive session eleven twenty five AM to discuss personal matters of non elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy five dot four three one nine B one. And the purpose of the close session is to protect the privacy rights of the employees. And the board came out of the executive session in fifteen minutes in the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty nine and also one commissioner on the Zoom platform. And those present will be finance director, county commissioners.
Assistant HR and county counselor.
Assistant HR and county council.
Okay, I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. So Melissa's using Jody's platform to jump in. I've. Actually, I can jump on Jody's computer in order to be able to see and talk to you. So add Jody, please. Okay, we are back in open session. Any unfinished business?
We have any idea when we're going to do our next budget?
Anytime is fine.
Not today. I just, I I didn't know whether, you know, because I think we're going to have a lot yet to hash through and just the better, more we can schedule it out. So we have things prepared, the better.
So do you want to kind of do like one on ones? Each department?
We talked about that.
I would like to have one more with you and the commission.
Okay.
First, did we decide we were, yes. So can we do that next Tuesday after our meeting? Just adjourn in the workshop like we happened?
I'm.
And then and then from that, we can then schedule what we need to do. Okay. All right, we'll do that if that's okay with you, Eric.
Yes.
And good with you, Helen?
Yep. I just kind of want to know the path forward and how we do that.
County councillor updates?
The service process and the tax sale is actually going probably easier than any we've ever had before. It's also been an increasingly collaborative process throughout. We have the people we need to get a service process on. There's about a hundred and thirty of them, and we have over half of them served now. And there are ninety percent of them of the remainder, there are things out for service process. So we're pretty easily going to do that. To meet the scheduling of trying to have a sale beginning of the year.
So the list that you had sent, that you're looking for certain individuals, there's like an address there. Is that the most current one that you've got that's not correct? Or has that?
That was the address that we tried.
And it's not correct?
Right.
Okay.
For some reason, they they couldn't get served there.
Okay, because I may have a line on a couple of them, but I just wanted to double check with one.
And there were also a couple on that list that actually have been served already. That the returns came, well, a couple, two of them I missed the returns when they came in. But anyway, there were a couple that put share of office filed returns afterwards. So they have been served, but it takes a few days for their returns to make it up. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. No more need for an executive session. So approval of the expenses, we had a chance to review those. Do I have a motion to approve the expenses?
So move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes two to zero, one abstaining because he hasn't had a chance to look at it yet. All right, public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. We are adjourned.
Just have a great day.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you. Michelle, you can use rock, paper, scissors on who seconded first, Alan or me?